I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder that the meeting is being videotaped, anyone not wishing to be seen on television may be excused. Before we start, I just want to make a little announcement. The board, I'm sorry. Before we start, I want to make an announcement. If you're here, the board has met and has found a way to restore some positions. So if you're here for the following four counseling positions will be restored, eight-hall monitors positions, and restoring time and benefits for all assistants. So if you're here for that.
Are you going to go into more detail about what was found and why it was decided for that and what the repercussions are for the issues with the budget than what's been decided?
There's going to be a vote to raise the taxes. I think that's probably the answer.
Yeah, later on, there'll be a vote to raise taxes.
Why are there special rules for people, Ralph? Why is there special rules for people that they can yell out because they're part of your political nonsense? Hey, Ron, I want to keep quiet. No, I'm not going to keep quiet.
You guys got to let the meeting proceed without interrupting, please.
There'll be a motion to raise taxes. That's how we'll restore the positions.
Can we explain it?
Yeah.
Okay, guys, let me explain it. So the governor allowed school districts two options. The first option was if they lost money this year, which was not us, you were allowed to recoup about 45% of that. So that was not us, so we couldn't recoup it. So the only other option, because there is no extra money, is for the board to raise taxes. Now, we had, what they did was they took the, they measured 2024, 2025 from aid in 2020, 2021, and the board had access to approximately between two different areas of bank cap, about 2.4, it's approximate, million dollars. So what is happening right now, Janine is working feverishly to fix this agenda item. This will allow us to bring back four counseling positions, eight hall lab monitors, and to restore the benefits and time for all employees. Before it was, you know, we were initially looking at years nine through 15 to restore, but in executive session, the board agreed to look at the benefits and time for all assistants. So that will come through a tax raise. So just so you know, the resolution that's on the agenda is changing. It's actually very hard to do this. Janine's feverishly trying to do it because there's a lot of calculations that has to go in. The agenda item is changing, so it will not be what was there. The initial thought process, just so you understand, was to save the four counseling people, the folks, the eight-hall lab monitors, restore the benefits years nine through 15, and the initial discussion was to actually take about $400,000 to put into one-time projects. Not because we value projects over people, it actually would have allowed us to utilize our rod grants. For those of you that don't know, the state has allowed us access to 40% funding from the state, and that would have allowed us to do an HVAC project. And then the thought process was, was to placeholder that money for next year when we know that we're going to have additional cuts. That is not the pathway we traveled. The pathway we traveled was four counselors, eight-hall lab monitors, and restoring all the benefits for our assistant folks. Okay? And that's where we are. So what's going to happen is that will appear under finance, and that's where that will be voted upon. And then what we'll have to do after that is that today, we have to vote on the agenda item. We're going to have to have a new budget hearing, which will happen in July, and then we'll have to submit everything like a normal, like a normal budget would be. Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Hibbs.
You've got it, sir.
No presentations, any discussion? School and community relations?
I have that.
Okay.
Give me two secs. So sorry. Okay. A quick reminder that our food bank is scheduled for July 17th behind the 910 wing of Washington Township High School. Sorry, my phone went crazy. Clients visiting the Washington Township Public Schools' mobile food pantry are asked to enter the back of the Washington Township High School, 509 Herthville Cross Keys Road, Soul, off the Gantown Road entrance, parked near the basketball courts, where the pantry will be staged. Clients will be asked to provide proof of residency at the time of registration for graduates. Big congratulations to all of our 2024 Washington Township High School graduates, as well as a great big thank you to all that made this ceremony possible. Sincerely appreciated. Definitely want to thank the advisors who put so much time and effort into the painstaking details that go into graduation. For those of you that attended, it was a beautiful night and a wonderful ceremony. We were very thankful for the weather because surrounding districts were definitely not as lucky as us. It was absolutely beautiful. Special thank you to all those who donated or joined us for the Washington Township Educational Foundation golf outing yesterday at White Oaks Country Club. This fundraiser is an immense undertaking to provide our staff with the opportunity to apply to purchase additional instructional supplies, experiences, speakers, or equipment that would not otherwise be available. We are so appreciative of the efforts of the entire WTEF, but especially those that prepared and worked the event. So thank you to everybody who attended, and thanks for Charlie, who put really everything together, and he had a birthday yesterday, too. So special thanks to Charlie. Okay? And that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Correspondents, have a motion to approve the letters of discipline and the correspondence, under the correspondence listed. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ralph, just real quick.
Yeah.
Just under correspondence, there, we only have six things listed, and I know there's more than that. So just another reminder to everyone, if you get any emails, we don't all get emails, but it should be captured, and I know there's a lot missing. Some things are sent to personal emails, some aren't, but if we're getting something on the board, we have to report it in this correspondence. So just a reminder.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have a motion to approve the minutes for April 2024?
Second.
Roll call?
No roll call.
No roll call.
A roll call? Okay. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Old business? Any old business?
I got something.
Go ahead, Dave.
The heavy heart and most consideration, I feel like now is an appropriate time for me and my family for me to resign from the school board. That's it for me.
Dave, she can't hear you.
Wish you the best, Dave.
I hereby resign.
Thank you for your time, Dave. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Dave.
Good luck.
Thanks, Dave.
Any other old business?
I just have a question. Is it the next, is it, is it the first or second board meeting that we're going to recognize Janice from Wedgewood School for the first and mat?
Let me reach out to the family and see what works for the family. How's that?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, motion to, open to the public on agenda items? Motion?
One second.
Okay, sorry.
Second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Mark Lopez?
This is the agenda item.
Agenda items only.
Good evening. My name is Mark Lopez, and I'm a Spanish-Easterly Orchard Valley Middle School. I deliver this speech as a proud association member in solidarity with my fellow association members and leaders in a concerted effort to restore the children's programs, staff jobs, and trust in our administration lost by the disputed budget crisis and the subsequent administrative decisions. At the last board meeting, one of the concerns that I shared was the regards to the lack of transparency and the lack of funding advocacy in the timeline of the disputed budget crisis. I stated that the state released its financial aid package to districts on February 29th, and that the township family was notified two months later on April 30th of the disputed budget crisis. I stated that other locally affected districts had alerted their families timely and even created advocacy plans that included contacting legislators and/or busing people to Trenton to speak to advocate for funding for their family's children. I had two questions. My first question was, why was the township and family informed so late, to which I received no answer? My second question was, why didn't Township do the same funding advocacy for its family's children, to which I received a response from Dr. Hibbs that said that funding advocacy occurred immediately with his encouragement to contact Senator Paul Moriarty. At the encouragement of Dr. Hibbs, I spoke with one of Senator Moriarty's staff members yesterday at 10:30 a.m., who stated that the senator had a Zoom meeting with Dr. Hibbs on May 21st. May 21st is about three months after receiving the state's financial aid package. May 21st is three weeks after alerting the township family of the disputed budget crisis. May 21st is one week after the laying off of our township family members. May 21st is not immediately. Once again, I state that I do not believe that there is a budget crisis. Instead, I believe that the budget has been constructed by the school business administrator to reflect the priorities of the district as set by the superintendent and is approved by the Board of Education. I was raised a Roman Catholic, but there is a Methodist saying attributed to John Wesley that I love and believe in that states, "Do all the good you can by all the means you can, in all the ways you can, in all the places you can, at all the times you can, to all the people you can, as long as ever you can." Changing the priorities of the district by cutting children's programs, reducing the staff to student ratio, and reducing instructional time at the middle school by 84 hours in the year, as exhibited in the proposed new middle school schedule, in exchange for technology and objects, is not doing good for children. Lack of honesty, transparency, and stakeholder participation is also not doing good for children. We are Township. We are the Township family. We need to start acting like a good Township family again. This is what I am publicly calling for from all Township family members, starting now. Thank you to Mr. Ross, Ms. Baker, Senior Serrano, and Mr. Tomzak for doing good for children in your opposition to the original budget. I thank you.
Jim, Mark? Let me just say a quick, quick thing. Thanks, Mark. You know, what you, what you probably didn't ask the question was, did I reach out to his chief of staff and have, and try to line up a conversation? So maybe you could go back and ask that question, and they'll definitely tell you I did, for sure. So, and it was not in May that I did that. So I absolutely did reach out right away. But I think the most important thing to take away from that conversation, even if I could have gotten to him in the first minute, which just wasn't possible, his conversation was, we were overfunded, and he's been saying it for years, for sure. Also, too, you know, you're saying that we're trading tech and objects for people. The tech all comes out of the lease. So it's just, it's just false. It's absolutely false that we're doing that. If you want to sit down and maybe have a conversation about some of the things that you're claiming, I'm happy to do that, but I do not think people are less important or, you know, are not as, people are more important than things, but the things that we have to purchase all come out of the lease. And just so you know, this year, the move to Chromebooks, which really was all my push from get-go, saved us millions over the long haul, which will allow us to save more staff going forward. But I'm happy to sit down and really address those conversations, but I did reach out, and I think it's John Saban, I think that's his name, but I did reach out, I did reach out immediately, just so you know.
I could just have one rebuttal?
You're not allowed to do that.
Another card out. Jim Marpino?
How you doing? I'm going to just include this on the agenda items because you increased the budget by almost a million dollars, am I correct?
Yeah, it's probably close to that.
Okay. We spent $944,000 on new bleachers, so I'll just include this in the whole budget thing. The May 21st board meeting, a comment was made regarding the bleachers that three, three words were used. They're old, they're failing, and they're a hazard. I'm going to throw old out the window because a lot of us are old, we don't replace ourselves, we just make needed repairs. So the bleachers are failing and they're a hazard. I noticed on Facebook, graduation the other night, I'll just estimate about 1,000 people that were sitting on the failing and hazardous bleachers. That reeks of negligence, and I'm sure that if the bleachers were actually failing and a hazard, you would have notified the Office of Emergency Management that you were going to put 1,000 people on a failing structure. Your attorney would have jumped up and down and said, "Don't do this." The sad thing is, we don't have to worry about that because your bleachers aren't failing. I Oprah requested from Ms. Wechter, thanks for getting back to me, any reports indicating structural damage and/or safety concerns with the bleachers. I was forwarded the July 31st, 2023, report from your engineers, Remington and Burnick. These are some key words from that report. Good structural condition, structurally sound, no section loss was observed, columns, base plates, and anchor bolts appear to be galvanized steel and in good overall condition, zero section loss or deterioration observed. It is recommended from your own engineers in July of 2023 that the existing steel components exhibiting minor rust on the access stairs to the bleachers be sandblasted and properly primed and repainted. That's the only recommendation for a structural report or any hazard report that I received under Oprah. So I'm left to believe there is no issues with the bleachers. Because if you're going to spend nine, almost $950,000, taxpayer money, I would hope there's a report saying that this is dangerous. Because you're raising taxes by about a million dollars, you've cried poor, poor, poor about your capital reserve, but it seems to me that you're like my neighbor, you know, who doesn't have the money but then comes in with a brand-new car. And during the budget presentation, you said that you guys were spending $800,000 on the bleachers. Same amount that was said last year when it was put in the 2324 budget. That's not true. Your purchase order to Nickerson Company, who's doing the week on work on the bleachers, was signed in July of, December of '23, and the total bill is $9,45,666.50, or 50 cents. The original bill was $889,364.94, but again, $56,319.59. Again, can somebody explain to me, one, if you have, as you stated, that you have failing bleachers and they're a safety hazard, why did you put about 1,000 people on them during graduation? Or can you point me to any other reports that say that there's any issues with the bleachers besides just needing to sandblast, prime, and paint? Because this is a lot of money we're spending, and there seems to be no backup for what you're spending it, or why you're spending it. Thank you.
Hi, Jim. Okay. You, so the report that you're referring to, you are right. The bottom portion of the bleachers, we, we actually, we kept, which is what you're referring to. The top port, that's 100% true, sir. You can go look, I'm not going, listen, we can't go back and forth. Yeah, you can, and feel free to talk after because I would have no reason to hide behind the bleacher project, which was budget into 2324. So what happened is, is that the underneath steel, when we, we had honestly like four different looks by our architect, at first glance, they said that it was all okay. They had questions about the footers, which we had to dig into and look, and then in the end, they actually made the recommendation that we do all the bolts because they were, they were rotting and breaking off. So we fixed all that. So the underneath everybody of the bleachers, we kept. Had we have had to get rid of that, the, the, the project would have probably doubled or tripled in price because of the cost of steel. So what, the top part is where the issues were, which is all being done. We're actually now, and we don't have, you know, in redoing it, we're having access for wheelchairs, which we don't have in the main, which I think there's not many people in here that would argue that wheelchair accessibility is important in this day and age. So we're also going to have entrances from the back. So the reality is, the bleachers were failing, there were numerous problems. I really tried to find a picture on my phone, but, because they, they took off the plastic pieces with all the rotting wood that was there, so they were rotting. Now, listen, you can feel how you want about bleachers, but the bleachers did not affect staff. The bleachers were all done in the 2324 budget, not 2425. And it's unrealistic to think that even though we are going to have to be really fiscally responsible, that we're not going to fix things. It's, it's, it's actually, it's such a misnomer to think that we wouldn't have to fix things. Now, you might not like that we did it, however, the bleachers absolutely needed, needed attention, and they were years and years old. We had broken benches, we had to shut down benches, we really tried to paint the plastic at some point to make them look presentable. It was just their time. But the bottom part, we saved, which saved Township millions, because it would have, it would have tripled about in price. If I recall correctly, it was in the $2.4 million range, I think, if we did it all.
All good?
Yeah. All good.
Randy Ford?
Randy Ford. So just wanted to ask a couple of questions about three separate sets of agenda items. It won't be five minutes, so don't worry about that. The first thing is N38 and 41. I wanted to see if it was possible to read what the quantitative goals and qualitative goals that are being voted on. I know the board voted on them back in September of 2023. They're not in the agenda tonight, they're not in the resolution back then, so I'd be interested to know what those are. For 44 through 46, these are all professional services. First, I'll say, from what I know about professional services, the rates seem very reasonable. I'm just sort of curious as to why in prior years, you guys went out to bid, and this year, you didn't? Again, solicitor 170 from 165, extremely reasonable, but just curious of what the thought process there was. And then on the board resolution for 55, I understand that that's going to be changed. My question would be that, or request would be that when you go through the budget line items, if you could read in the resolution what they're going to be? And my question is, if $400,000 or more is still tied to construction, is that 100% utilization for things where we're going to get rod grants, or is it a sub-portion? And those are my questions. So thank you, and I'm sorry to see Dave go. Thank you.
Randy, I'll take the first one. I think the easiest thing to do, if you want to look at the, the goals in the superintendent's contract, is just Oprah copy the contract?
I did this morning.
Okay, so I'm sure you'll get it, obviously, as soon as Janine's, she's pretty quick turning that stuff around.
I can take the, I can take the.
You got the little question?
Yeah, she's, yeah, she's got it. Wait, man, what's your third one? I wrote down miracles.
55, the board resolution for the construction project.
Oh, gotcha. Sorry, thank you. What ran on my head? So the $400,000 is not a part of this. What it, what it would have been is, so on the agenda, it is. The agenda item is changing right now because the board decided to go and travel a different path. What that would have been was the utilization of a rod grant, which we would have put in 60%, and the state would have put in 40%, but we're not doing that. Okay? And then cycle, you want to talk to Randy about the cycle?
Yeah, so we have a policy for our professional services contracts, and we, what we do is, we, every three years, we do an RFP. So there's a bunch of them that we have listed in the policy, and then throughout the year, the board discusses which professionals are on the three-year cycle to go out to RFP, and if we want to drop one or add one. So the professionals that are listed on the agenda were the ones that were up for renewal this year and not on the RFP cycle.
Terry Schecter?
Hello, good evening. Thank you for your time and for the response to my correspondence returned by some of the board members these last few weeks. Thank you. I'm also sorry that someone felt they had to resign their position tonight. For the best results, we sometimes do have to challenge one another, but to engage in productive and respectful discourse, we must have a clarity of communication and transparency. I think it's been disingenuous for you to say that there are no program cuts for next year. As news has trickled down to parents from unofficial sources, it is clear while the administration has done its best to avoid eliminating programs, cuts seem to be universal. It makes it hard to work in partnership when it's so difficult as a parent to get to the bottom of the important decision points and understand the downstream impacts. I don't want to find out on field day that the four classrooms for my daughter's current third-grade class will be consolidated into three fourth-grade classrooms next year, resulting in nearly 30 kids to a class with just the current enrollment. This is a cut. If you think it's important, you should call it a cut and explain why it's necessary. Nowhere in your budgetary PowerPoint did you highlight the impact to class size at the elementary level for parents.
What it, what it would have been is, so on the agenda, it is. The agenda item is changing right now because the board decided to go and travel a different path. What that would have been was the utilization of a rod grant, which we would have put in 60%, and the state would have put in 40%. But we're not doing that. Okay? And then cycle, you want to talk to Randy about the cycle?
Yeah, so we have a policy for our professional services contracts, and we, what we do is, we, over every three years, we do an RFP. So there's a bunch of them that we have listed in the policy. And then throughout the year, the board discusses which professionals are on the three-year cycle to go out to RFP, and if we want to drop one or add one. So the professionals that are listed on the agenda were the ones that were up for renewal this year and not on the RFP cycle.
Teri Schechter?
Thank you for your time and for the response to my correspondence returned by some of the board members these last few weeks. Thank you. I'm also sorry that someone felt they had to resign their position tonight. For the best results, we sometimes do have to challenge one another, but to engage in productive and respectful discourse, we must have a clarity of communication and transparency. I think it's been disingenuous for you to say that there are no program cuts for next year. As news has trickled down to parents from unofficial sources, it is clear while the administration has done its best to avoid eliminating programs, cuts seem to be universal. It makes it hard to work in partnership when it's so difficult as a parent to get to the bottom of the important decision points and understand the downstream impacts. I don't want to find out on field day that the four classrooms for my daughter's current third-grade class will be consolidated into three fourth-grade classrooms next year, resulting in nearly 30 kids to a class with just the current enrollment. This is a cut. If you think it's important, you should call it a cut and explain why it's necessary. Nowhere in your budgetary PowerPoint did you highlight the impact to class size at the elementary level for parents. Most of you are educators, I'm sure I don't need to waste time on how concerning this large jump in class size is for a parent. As I shared previously and in my correspondence, I do not believe that the non-renewal of these employees will result in cost savings. I urge you to vote to reinstate these employees and positions and classes, which is in your power to do so. While I do not agree, I recognize you feel that the administration has demonstrated a budgetary savings by simply removing the comp and benefits from their spreadsheet for these employees, but this will not have the resulted impact to savings for the district. This is what I've consulted on for well over a decade professionally for companies with much larger budgets, and it's clear, large rifts never in the short term and certainly not in the long term realize measurable cost savings. Any temporary additional cash flow is lost in benefits and turnover. It's well documented and accepted that large reductions enforced often have higher-than-expected costs within the same budgetary year. Budgetary cost avoidance is not the same thing as actual realized savings, and planning as if it will have those results is not the path to fiscal responsibility. As previously shared, these were low-paid positions with little room for growth. Many of those will have to be statutorily replaced for the next school year anyway. Where are the savings? What is the cost to onboard new employees to replace them? Training, screening, background checks? New employees mean loss of efficiency, more mistakes, which equals greater risk to the district, and loss of knowledge. These all have real-world tangible costs that you won't find in the district's budget projections. There also won't be a dollar-for-dollar benefit savings, as shared by the district. There is still no clarity around how these projections were calculated. Anyone who is benefits-eligible and was not renewed is also COBRA-eligible. That means if they have a great need for care and elect to continue coverage, the district will be paying for those high medical claims for 18 to 36 months. Again, where are the savings? Understanding how the district arrived at these projected benefit savings is a crucial piece, but will only ever be a projected estimate. Why should we help support additional tax dollars when we still don't have a clear picture of the proposed budget? In my professional experience, I've seen the investment in personnel have a significantly better ROI than saving for potential future capital concerns. The current approved personnel cuts, or what's left, will not realize the savings that the administrative has estimated for the upcoming school year. I desperately want to preserve the wonderful team of people and resources at our school. Please work to reinstate these value employees, programs, and classes tonight. Thank you.
I have a card, Watson, and there's no agenda, I assume it's on agenda items, whoever Watson is.
One sec, too. Ter, I think we should grab a cup of coffee and have a conversation, because, A, everything that we did, it's, it's not even a disputable fact that we had a budgetary gap and that we had to eliminate staff to do that gap. So it, we're, some of those, the concept of having to bring those people back is just, it's not happening, because you'd have a budget, and I know that you know about budgets, especially being with the library, right? You can't have a budget that exceeds what you can bring in, which is where we were, by about $7 million. So I'm happy to talk to you all about that piece. I don't know of anywhere, Gretchen, anywhere for, for 30, so I don't, that is...
No, and what we do, we, we always do this over the summer, too. So we look at enrollment, because it's very fluid at the elementary level, particularly in County One, where we don't anticipate, you know, new students that may have gone to another setting other than our district. So we, through, on a weekly basis, report our enrollment numbers and we compare them school by school. We had a situation in Bells this year where we did have a high class size, and that was really because of space. We didn't have the physical classroom space to add. And for the one-year bump, we just didn't have the space for that one year to, wasn't worth putting on a modular unit for, you know, a large group. But we analyze it on an annual basis, on a weekly basis throughout the summer, and if a section needs to be put in, or a grade level needs to be changed, we do that. So there have been many summers, unfortunately, where I have to call a teacher and say, look, the enrollment really isn't what we thought it was going to be in fourth grade, and this is higher in this grade, and you need to switch. Somebody has to, you know, go down to a different grade level. And that happens throughout. So we make sure that we're equitable across, and we don't have anybody above 25, to my knowledge, right now.
But if we had, we had 30, we'd address it immediately.
And the lower, it's really down to like 20 to 22.
So we would address that immediately, if that's what that was. But why don't, why don't, why don't we get together and have a conversation? I would do... Okay. I think you, I'll, I'll email you. Okay.
Molly Alver? Alver?
You missed Watson.
I didn't know if there was a Watson.
There is, yes.
Everything okay?
Yeah, I'll catch you, I'll catch you after this one. Sorry about that. No, no, go ahead, go ahead. We'll get Watson.
All right.
Sorry, Mr. Watson.
I attended the meeting last month, and I asked if there would be accountability or changes in operations as a result of the terribly cruel and reckless HR emails that were sent out during Teacher Appreciation Week. Can we get an update on any changes or accountability for that within the HR department? We also received an update from the WTEA and WTSSSPA on June 12th, that there were still false claims being made by the administration in regards to the budget shortfalls. Will this all be balanced on both sides before you approve a new budget? And if we find that the budget was misrepresented, what will the accountability be on either side for the disruption that was caused? And finally, I would like to ask for a resolution to be passed that all costs associated with rehiring or hiring new people for the positions that are to be rehired for, what we just talked about in the beginning of this meeting, be released to the public. I think the taxpayers deserve to know the costs that they will incur to rehire, as Teri said, check backgrounds, train, and share that knowledge across the board for our schools. And finally, based on the question that was just asked, when my child attends Birch's next year and our third-grade classes move to fourth grade where there'll only be three teachers, you're saying that there's not going to be more than 25 people in a class, and that's on record? If something happens where that's not addressed, do you plan to address it? Because I'm going to be here for every meeting until it is.
So first off, I've already addressed HR. I'm not going to address that anymore. As far as, as far as the budget questions, to be honest, please go back and watch the last couple of board meetings. We demonstrated very clearly, and Janine did, that there is no extra money. So looking for accountability in people who supposedly have this money, there is no extra money, and we quantifiably proved that. If we had extra money, we certainly would not have, have cut staff in any way, shape, or form. But there definitely was a budgetary shortfall. It's, it's not deniable. It's also not deniable that our capital infusions are down. Our money from year to year is down. We do not hide money anywhere in vacant positions, and we also budget breakage. All of those are hallmarks of school districts not having money. Please ask other people. Please, reach out to other people you may know, reach out to other superintendents, email the executive county superintendent, Bob Bumpus, and ask him those questions. He'll tell you the exact same thing. So that's all I have to say about that piece of it. And I'd be very clear, what, what was brought was that we had a class size of 30, which I think Mrs. Gerber addressed that we don't. So, you know, you are always welcome to advocate for your child, for sure, but we talked about the class size of 30, that is not accurate. So we will monitor...
Not just because, I still believe she said nobody who's 25 can...
Yeah, so what happens, I'll tell you what happens and has happened in any school district that I've ever been in. All summer, we, we monitor enrollment on what is essentially a weekly basis. Because what ends up happening is that we work off a projection, right? So, but you don't know that, you could have 10 or 15 kids actually leave a grade level, and that could, that could lower it. So what Gretchen really was saying was, sometimes you have to make that hard phone call to a teacher who was supposed to be in third, but we don't need third, and they go to first. So we monitor. But we, we have to also, what I'd ask everyone to understand is that there is a pot of money that we have here, and we do our very best within that. Yes, we do have to fix things, and yes, we do have to add sections. So as necessary, the specific question was, what would you do if you had 30 kids in a class? If I realized at any point we had 30 kids in a classroom at elementary, I would look right away and say, fire, go, let's go. I mean fire, I mean hire. You know, let's go, get on it, and, and take care of that, because that's just, that's way too high. Now, could, could a classroom end up with 25 or 26? Yeah, and I'll tell you exactly why that happens. So we watch it all the way through. So let's say they're sitting at like 22 or 23, and it's August like 18th, and then August 25th, we have four or five kids that come in that push it up a little bit, when people already know they're, they're teachers, or whatever that's released, that's when we're very reluctant to pull that back, because then Johnny knows they have Mrs. Smith, and now they don't have Mrs. Smith, and you have to go through that hiring process. So we try to do that way earlier on, but it's not an exact science, because we can't control when people register. So, and what I've seen over the last few years, especially since COVID, is that people tend to register late. They really come in in droves at the very end, and it's very hard in that moment for a lot of reasons. Number one, we have to post a position, which takes time. Then you have to interview, and then what do you do in the, in the meantime? So at the very end, that's where we get caught on sometimes in that moment. If we have time to plan, we always try to do a good job with that. Gretchen, did I hit the nail on the head with that one?
Yep. Just, Ralph, as a, as a point of order, we just allowed a rebuttal. No need to apologize. That's something we control. And because we allowed it, we're going to have to allow it for everyone. You don't have to apologize. It wasn't directed towards you in any way. But as a board, you can't have one person, again...
We're, we're not going to allow anymore.
But I'm just saying, if somebody else comes up and wants to rebuttal, then I'm going to say, you have to allow them to rebuttal, because we cannot...
It was a fast rebuttal before I caught it, so...
Fast or not, I'm just, and I'm just saying...
Well, I'm sure...
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna argue for the next person that wants to rebuttal. I'm gonna say you're allowed to rebuttal. Again, not directed towards you, please, it's not your responsibility. I'm just saying, we have to, you have to be fair and equitable to every single person. And if someone wants to rebuttal, I'm gonna hit my mic and say you should rebuttal, because you have to follow the rules. There you go.
Ms. Watson? Watson? You heard Watson?
The school board still does not cover the differences in this community. That's one. Wow, they started me quickly. The other guy they let have several other minutes, and he talks, and then they put the five minutes on, but that's good. I'm here because, once again, in order to try to make a real change in education for some groups of children, you have to start in the middle class with what is called the white women in the suburbs and the young white teachers to make changes. Because it is very important that we end some of the ignorances that is continuing in this society. It may look like black exploitation, where you see all of these commercials and shows that African-Americans are on, but on the inside, the racism still exists. And here is a perfect example, because you still, even in this day and time, you still do not have, what I would say, a diverse panel that covers everyone in this community. But now, I only have a few minutes, so I noticed that the time is ticking really quickly, and I want to do several of my arguments. First, the first argument is that you must make changes in what you are teaching young people at the core level, because half of them are learning stuff that should be wiped from the learning materials, such as Indian. The word Indian is really a derogatory, just like the word nigger. Because Indian is what Christopher Columbus, in confusion, called people of the nation, Cherokee, Navajo. Because he confused Patel Singh Indians with Americans, and he called them Indians. It's still being taught in school books. And every day on television, you have cowboys and Indians. And the change comes from young mothers and young teachers who say, we are not going to allow this swarm of ignorance. Now, I've said white and black are separational tools that was created by my white grandfather a long time. When you look at me, you automatically want to say that I'm black. Black is derogatory. I don't care how many people say it, it's derogatory. I am not black. I'm not a color. I'm a being, a human being. And to everyone here, I'm your little sister, whether you like it or not. And what happened is, you're not training young people to wipe out colors. You're not training young people to think about who we really are. That's why so many kids in this neighborhood do drugs, and that's everywhere. You isolate them. You intimidate them. You cast them out. You shun them. You make them think that they're supposed to be something that they can't be, when they can be everything they want to be. You put labels and you classify, and you cannot have a conversation with someone when they think that they're here, and they try to make you think they're here. You're not having a conversation. You're not having a rebuttal. You're not having anything. You have a closed mind, closed eyes, everything shut off. You're going to think what you want to think, and you're going to place what you think on other people. You're not opening up anything, and you're not changing anything. Because conversation is when two people can communicate equally without hate and ignorance. I should be able to say anything to you, and you not take it the wrong way. And you do. And that's the problem. And that's why change is not occurring. So no matter what you say, there still need to be massive change, and you have to start with young moms and young teachers. Because the old people, they're not going to change too much. When I say the Italian joke, a real Italian say, in the history of Italy, no African have ever touched Italy. And in fact, they will say, what about the girl's tie? But for people who are in their races, that's a reason for them to hate what I'm saying, because I'm trying to say inclusion, change. You can't change if you can't listen. Like ignorance, like if you laughed at anything that I said, that's your intelligent level. Poor people laugh at some things.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Delaney Bates, and I am a seventh-grade student at OVMS. I want to talk about some changes at our school district and how they affect us. Our music and art teachers are very important. Music teachers do a lot more than just teach us a song. They pick the music, plan for many different music classes, help with marching band, school musicals, the pop, pops concert, and competitions and trips. They also help us practice either in groups or one-on-one. These activities help us learn teamwork and grow our talents. Our art teachers also do a lot. They teach us different kinds of art, design, props for school events, organize art shows, and create morals that make our school look beautiful. These projects help us be creative and feel proud of our school. But now, some classes are being cut, and advanced and basic classes are being combined. This makes it hard for everyone to get the help they need. Also, many teachers might have to travel between schools because we don't have enough staff. This means their classrooms are closed when they are not here, and we miss out on extra practice and help. The school day is now about 30 minutes shorter, so our class periods are shorter, too, and our teachers have more work to do in less time. They might have to use their prep or lunch periods to travel, which means they have less time to eat, plan lessons, and support us. To help fix this, I asked the board to hire more full-time staff so they don't have to travel between schools, create schedules that reduce the need for teachers to travel during class time, keep classrooms open so we can have extra help and practice, especially in our music and art. Our teachers are working very hard, but they need your support to keep giving us a great education and fun activities. Thank you for listening. I hope we can work together to make our school even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Forte?
Delaney, you did a very good job. Thank you. All the decisions that we made this year were very hard. Mr. Crigliano, who is in charge of visual performing arts, tried to really pair the music teachers with their passion. music teachers with their passions. Yeah, sometimes they may have to travel, but there's a lot of, a lot of school districts where people have to travel. But I agree with you, teachers make the difference and the arts are very, very important and you spoke very well. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Nick Forte. I wasn't going to talk tonight, but I'll make this brief. So it seems to me, based on what I've observed since March, is that this administration was purposely looking to reduce teaching staff. The interaction with Mr. Urdi from.
I guess, I think his name's Chris Milam. He's the head of the Democrat chair for Democrat Party. He, he just got indicted. So, you know, I guess Tom Zech had family obligations. Anyway, here's what I want to know about the, there was all this hullabaloo that there was $7 million that we were sure, which was true, but there was all this hullabaloo that you had it in your desk drawer over in Hollydale. And then after all that, we came out and basically from what I, you know, people send me these Facebook things, they just didn't find it. I think even, Ralph, it might have been your daughter, actually wrote on Facebook, well, I still think the money's there and it's up to Dr. Hibbs to prove that it's, it's there. Huh? And then she says, I could tell because Carol didn't say anything. I, you know, it makes no sense to me. So we didn't find the 7 million, okay? And now we're doing what we can do, which is put more money towards a tax increase, right? And saving some jobs. Now, I originally said that I'm for putting even a higher tax increase and saving all the jobs. I'm, I'm right with you, okay? But you got to make choices, all right? Now, maybe we're not allowed to go over 3.9% or whatever, according to what Murphy has to say or whatever, what his new law that he put in place in relation to the budgets. But we didn't find the 7 million. That's the bottom line. And we had it in, the money that we're getting, I don't know why people are asking, where are you getting the money? Where are you getting the money? I think he told us at the beginning of the meeting. He's getting the money through a tax increase. And you can debate what we're spending the money on, but if we hire the, the teachers back, and I'm all for it, then according to whatever, we have to get rid of the hallway monitors, right? If we don't hire the counselors, you know, whatever. And I just want to say one other thing, all this stuff about the HR guy. I read a book by David Broder years ago about Congress and you always read about how the military buys a hammer for 700 hours. The percentage of the mil, of the budget for the military with those excessive is about less than 1%, all right? So whether he's going to do a good job or not going to do a good job, that's going to be the test of time. But $150,000 isn't going to make up the difference of 7 million, all right? That's the bottom line to that, all right? And then I want to talk about the vote of no confidence, but I'll do that later in the second session.
Donna Pescelli?
I spoke previously, two meetings ago, about the changes to health assistants. I met with Mr. Sweeney a few weeks ago regarding my job as the 910 health assistant. And I sent an email to Mr. Hibbs and Mr. Sweeney prior to that meeting and it detailed in there a table with certain employees with their hire dates, present jobs and where they've been assigned, which is as a health assistant. These individuals have less seniority than myself. During my meeting with Mr. Sweeney, I was informed that my job was actually eliminated. Now, I was never even told that off the get-go. I worked 7.5.75 hours, as did other health assistants. However, only the, the Thomas Jefferson Health Assistant job and mine were eliminated. Any other health assistants working 5.75, aside from those with over 20 years' service, had their hours decreased to 3.5 hours. I want to know why weren't all these other health assistant jobs eliminated or why wasn't my job just decreased to 3.5 hours? To get back to my meeting with Mr. Sweeney, I'm still waiting for an explanation on these individuals with less seniority than me who are keeping their jobs. I even followed up with another email to Mr. Sweeney without a response, which I was told that I would receive. I have one other thing I wanted to discuss and it's about the hallway monitors in the high school. I don't know, it hasn't really been discussed. I know that you've said who's going to be rehired, but is there going to be any kind of changes with all these switches that were made? I want you to realize that in the high school, in our bathrooms, there's vaping, a pot of tobacco. They, these incidences are reported, but no action is really taken because you have to be there and actually see the person doing it and all this stuff. So there's some students who won't even use the hallway bathrooms because of these things. Also, students walk around the halls texting, some with passes, some without, almost every period, like they're frequent flyers. So this is with monitors in the hallways, which, you know, there's no backup. So I don't even know what's going to happen in the fall. It's just going to fail. Also, in the 910 health office, there were more assessments for possible drug use than in the past seven years this year. So I've worked seven years and now this is the worst year. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Baldassaro?
I've done budgets my whole life, 33 of them to be exact. It's probably why I have no hair. I will say I've watched all of the meetings and, you know, it's painful. I've been involved in two budgets in my life where I had to have a reduction enforced. Now, if you have strong management and hold accountable, you do get the savings. It's, you know, you cut the jobs, you have to change how you lead. You know, you never want to see anybody lose a job. Ultimately, the first time I was in it, it was when I was a new accountant. It was deemed to me a failure of leadership and I believe that 100%. You don't get there in one year. You get there over a period of time. But make no mistake, we need to be better leaders. How you react to this will be very important, creating sustainable budgets, making sure that we don't go through this again, is something that you, we need to make sure. Now, one of the things I do, because I do budgets, I love to look at data and great thing about schools, it's an accountant's dream. Every school is required to put out a budget in the same exact format. So stupid me, I went and got 12 school districts around here and I compared everything because I, I just needed to see, nobody can tell, nobody here can say whether there's money or not, can't. But I will tell you, when NGAEA says that there are balances to take money from, that's dangerous. Because balances is not income. Income is what budgets are based off of. When you, it'd be like at home, if you make your income and you take your cash balance in your bank account and you use that as part of your budget, you're going to run out of your cash savings at some point. It's not sustainable. That's dangerous. But when I looked at all these surrounding districts, Washington Township has the luxury of greater revenue per pupil than just about every district. There was only a couple that were higher, which means we can spend more. If ever there was a magic formula, and this is all fact, if ever there was a magic formula that gave every district the same amount of money per student, we'd have to cut $10 million. Okay? Everybody needs to understand that. We're not making anything up here. Now, we have that luxury of a high, higher budget and we spend it. Not only do we spend it, we spend it to a greater degree. The amount, the percentage of dollars that we spend on our direct staff, classroom and support is higher than the average school district in South Jersey. Okay? So anybody thinking that this district is shortchanging our kids by cutting staff, it's wrong 100%. I put together a complete analysis, Dr. Hibbs, I sent it to you today. I still have great concerns about the budget. We have $300,000 in our capital for this year. The average district of everybody that I put together was about 3 million, okay? Understand, when you defer maintenance on your buildings, it doesn't go away. That is a battle you will lose every day of the week. Emergencies will come up. I guarantee you will spend more than $300,000 on capital this year. We're not in a great state right now because of the way our revenues have plummeted. I'd be worried about more revenues going down in the future just based on, again, we get, we have more money than most. A culture change is needed. We didn't get to this budget problem in one year. We didn't get to this 355 ranking in one year. It happened over time. And I need, we need this board to stop doing what you're doing, stop trying to throw the super and his administration under the bus, support him, give him a damn chance to do his job. I have no clue whether he can do this job, but I know he can't do it if you don't all support him. We have nothing to lose. He's here. He's not going anywhere. Support him. Yeah, and I'm looking at you guys, okay? Stop it. Support.
Thank you, Mr. Baldassaro. Do I have a motion to close to the public?
Does it move?
Second?
Stacy, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Hey Ralph, just as a point of order, we have another card here, but the person already spoke. So if you just want to, there's another card up here that will be for the second public comment because you can only come up once for every public comment. So I just want to make sure you know it wasn't forgotten, but it will, and there's another one here, but it just can't happen in this public comment. It will be enough.
Okay.
Ralph, would you like to make a comment? Ralph?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I just, I just want to make a comment. There was a comment made that cutting staff doesn't hurt students. We've heard from several people over the last couple of meetings and one of the concerns I have seriously is in the art program. The, when, obviously there had to be some staff cuts and there was a change in the implementation of the program at the middle school. At the middle school, you have identified students in art that are gifted and we have a policy on gifted and talented. It says that you're going to group those students homogeneously in a class. We also have a separate curriculum and the curriculum mirrors the first year at the high school, just like we have in foreign language. Our students that do well in foreign language can move right into the second year of a foreign language. So when we, when we look at the unfortunate situation of cutting staff, it does hurt kids because what's going to happen, we're going to still have that program, but during the course of the year, as the marking periods change for the cycle, there are going to be students that are going to be cycled in who have not been identified as gifted in art. So now the burden is on the teacher to teach two curriculums. You hear a lot in education about different curriculum, teaching different levels of kids and all that kind of stuff. It all sounds good, you know, it sounds good on paper, but the reality is when you're in the classroom and you're dealing with behaviors and levels of kids that are, you know, really high and really low, it, it becomes a real challenge and our, I think our staff does a great job. So I want to say to the board, you know, we're going to be looking at, at a situation right now with money, but, you know, is there some way that we could, we could somehow make sure that, for instance, I had asked a question and I know Mrs. Wector's been very, very busy. I asked the question, we, we have to, on our budget, kind of look at extraordinary aid and we have to put a number down there. And I talked to some people through our, through our association, the School Board Association, that lots of times, that's, that's a place where a BA can put a number down and then we get more money. We don't find out about this money until late July, I understand. So the question, Mrs. Wector, I've been asking for a few weeks now, is that, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, historically in the last maybe three to four, five years, what kind of money do we get above what we put in the budget? And you may not have that, you may not have it right now, but what I'm saying to the board is if, for instance, we get money back more than what we thought, is there some way that we can kind of look at bringing this staff for art, whether it be a part-time teacher or a full-time teacher, so that we can provide the program that we've had in this district since, I think, 1989? And, and it's, it's a source of pride for our school district. Not all school districts have a gifted art program. And it is, you know, and I know one of the things when we talked about this budget, that we did not want to hurt kids and we didn't want to hurt programs and we didn't want to change programs. So how can we, how can we take a look at this particular program? You know, maybe Dr. Hibbs, do you have any suggestions and any kind of reconsideration what we can do so that we have a, we have a program that's running, that's identified by our policy in gifted and talented and it's those kids that meet the qualifications that get in there? And we're not going to, throughout the course of the year, add more students to kind of balance the classes where it presents a problem in there. I think that's what that young lady tried to explain, okay? And, and I don't know if she, it was her that spoke the week before, the meeting before, but somebody else talked about it and I've heard about it. So what can we do? Is there some way, maybe, maybe if, if, if somebody retires and we're able to combine some classes, okay? You know, a social studies teacher leaves and let's take a look at the configuration of numbers and not just hire another social studies teacher? Maybe we could bring somebody back for the art program?
Can I just say something? I, I have art and music kids. My oldest son was in the accelerated art program. He's going to be a junior. It's hard to imagine he's going to be a junior. It's, he's in an intensive program in Philly this week. So art and music is extraordinarily important to myself, my kids and my family. Do I personally know exactly how it's going to happen? No, but I do have faith in Dr. Hibbs that any decision he makes truly is kid-focused and I do believe that it will work. And I do understand, I had concerns too, how they'll make that work, differentiate and things like that, but I think we know, if we could afford it, of course, but I think we need to give the administration a chance to make it, to make it happen.
I mean, if, if we're talking about, you know, exercising our, our, our ability to, and we're, and we're not, the public needs to know, the amount of taxes that we're raising is not as high as we can go, isn't that correct?
That's right.
Okay? So, you know, I don't know if you need a part-time art teacher or you need a full-time art teacher or two full-time art teachers, you know, is that something that we want to look at with our, our ability to raise taxes? Just because, again, I'm going to go back, cutting staff does hurt students, okay? And, and it happens to affect this program. It affects, it affects it big time. Now, you know what? Again, I think somebody else mentioned, it's about priorities, okay? That, you know, is this, is this a program that's not, doesn't have a whole lot of people behind it compared to maybe, like if you have sports, all right? I'm just saying that, you know, we got to be a voice for these students. It's, it's, our students suffer from this. It's not right. It's not right. So, just a quick, just a quick comment. What can we do? Do we want to consider, consider?
Can we discuss this in committee meeting? Committee?
Well, I'm, I'm just, well, why, I'm, I'm putting ass out, out there.
I'm happy to.
And I think it's appropriate, okay? Am I appropriate when I'm talking about? I'm not talking about individual teachers.
Correct.
Okay, I'm talking about a program, all right? We have not, we have not voted on, on raising the tax, we voted, we voted, we talked about it, okay, in executive. We came out and told the public what we're going to do, and I'm just saying, are we able to revisit this right this moment? And let's, I'm listening to the people, and they're coming up and talking, and that it's making me think about some things. So I'm raising this up as a result of what I hear from the public speaking to us, and I think that's why we have public comment, because we need to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, but Connie, how do we, how do we put programs in the last minute? How are we going to put programs in the last minute? Administration?
No, we have a program. We have a program in place. The program is being readjusted because we had to cut staff. We have an opportunity to bring the staff back if we, if we feel this program is important enough.
So just, can I just?
That's what I'm saying. I don't know.
Connie, just for clarification, I think you're referencing, referencing District Policy 2464, gifted and talented students. And I'm just looking in here, and you may see it and I don't, you referenced about gifted and talented being homogeneously grouped. I don't see that in that polit, this policy, so I'm just going to punt it back to other Dr. Hibbs to ask Gretchen or someone, but I just, I'm asking.
I'll go back, I'll go back and find the policy I had that says that, when this, when the district identifies students, a group of students.
Correct.
That, that are advanced for their, for their age.
Correct.
Okay? So we have students that are advanced for art. That's, that is, and we call it gifted and talented.
I, I understand gifted and talented, and I'm also.
It's not actually gifted and talented though.
Okay, so I'm looking.
Talented art does not fall under, under gifted and talented.
Okay, that was my next question. And look, I'm, I support the arts, my kids are in the arts, I'm not saying I'm anti-art. I'm just asking, the policy that you referenced of gifted and talented, I don't see anywhere where it's homogeneously grouped. And if that's something that we want to do, then, Mr. Serrano, if you can add that to the policy committee to look at that policy, because I don't see it in here, I'm reading it in front of me, and I just want to make sure we're accurate.
Okay, wait, wait, I'll look it up myself, too.
Yeah, 2464.
What is it, two what?
I just, 2464.
Two, four, six, five.
And what Dr. Hibbs just said is that arts is not included in that.
Is not included in what?
In that gifted and talented, am I correct?
Yeah, I.
I just want to make sure, if we have to make a change of the policy, let's talk about it.
So let me, let me address.
So, as, for those of you that don't know what we're talking about, there is going to be two levels of kids in a classroom, which is going to have to be managed for next year. Art is very important, and so is music, and so is foreign languages, and so is everything else that we do. The problem is, is that when you have to cut, you know, there's, there's been, there's been varied opinions on whether or not that we had a budgetary shortfall, which is 100% accurate. There is a real budgetary shortfall that we had to deal with. And I'm going to say this very clearly, so if everybody can just make sure they hear this. There's going to be another one next year. There's going to be another one. We don't know exactly what it is yet, but there will 100% be a, a shortfall for next year. We're still figuring out what that is, which is why we're trying to be as fiscally responsible and try different things to save money and save millions, which we actually did this year through the budget process. Had we not have done what we did, we would have had to cut a tremendous amount of staff over and above, and it's, it's, it's not debatable. It's not. So can we watch for next year and monitor and listen? And if we can collapse, sure, we can always be reflective, and we are, but we are where we are right now. But the reality is, is that there's, there's not extra money that we have lying around, and I, quite frankly, I'm, I've, we've addressed this. This is asked and answered probably 100 times.
Can we just reference the extraordinary?
Go ahead.
I'll just reference the extraordinary aid. So this was discussed in previous meetings, but extraordinary aid is, is a revenue stream, but it's a reimbursement. We have to project, basically, it's a reimbursement for our neediest special education students that we have to apply to the state at the end of the year. So we have to support those students all year. At the end of the year, we apply to the state in May, and we don't know how much of a reimbursement we're going to get until August. The state only gives a certain percentage of what we apply for. It's one of those, again, revenue streams that I've talked about, if you've been watching some of the meetings, where you can't project it, and if you over-project it and say budget a higher amount and you don't achieve it, you're creating a bigger budgetary gap for the next year. Another point that I mentioned is, if you heard me talk about surplus, we do use surplus every year to balance our budget. That is a result of excess revenue we receive and unspent appropriations. We are not putting back in as much as we're taking out. If we were putting more back in, then maybe you would look at a revenue stream like that and say, maybe I can be more aggressive. We cannot be more aggressive because we're not making that number up each year, and every year when we start at our budget, we're not going to have the level of surplus to balance it.
Okay, I just want to respond to Mrs. Chilla in that policy 2464. It just, I was looking at, at the, at the second paragraph, "For the purposes of this policy, gifted and talented students means students who possess or demonstrate high levels of ability in one or more content areas when compared to their chronological peers in the district, who require modification of their educational program to achieve their, their capabilities." What I'm, okay, I'm, I'm looking at that as, these are students who are gifted in this particular area of the arts, and they are grouped accordingly. And when they're grouped together, they're grouped homogeneously. That's how they've been done in the past.
Nowhere in that policy does it say that. Nowhere in that, this policy does it say. I'm just saying, because I, I've talked about this a lot in terms of agreeing with you about homogeneous, homogeneous grouping for gifted and talented, and it has happened as pilots in this district from the last term that I was on. This specific policy does not reference anything around homogeneous grouping. I'm just saying, it doesn't. Am I saying I disagree with the theory? I'm saying this policy that you referenced doesn't, doesn't talk about homogeneous grouping, and if that's something that the board wants to discuss, we should put it in policy committee to talk about that.
Okay, maybe, maybe it doesn't reference it, and that would be a way to do it. My point is that if you're going to group kids according to their, their abilities, you are, it is homogeneously grouping. That's all I'm saying. Whether it's in there, the words in there or not.
Thank you, thank you.
But it's not, so we have to put it in if you want it.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, what, is there anything we could do for the, for this particular situation? Or they, basically, Dr. Hibbs, you said that it's happened in a lot of other areas, so we just have to live with it?
So I think I answered probably 17 times over the course of the last six different meetings.
Okay, that's, that's fine. That's good enough for me, thank you.
There is, there is no extra.
You don't have to repeat yourself.
There is no extra money to put out that we could do something. In my opinion, is not the right message, because if we had money to save folks, we would have. We did, and we engaged in conversations that are going to save some folks through the tax raise. We never would have done it any other way if we had extra money to give in any way, shape or form. We will monitor for next year. If, if this process is not successful, which we will support, then we will have to make a change moving forward.
Okay. Reporter, the superintendent, have a motion to approve superintendent's report, items number one, one to three?
Does it move?
Second?
Second.
Rule call.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty? He's not here. Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
He's not here.
Not here, that's right.
He's off the board.
Sorry, he's retired. Mr. Ross?
Yes. Instructional Affairs, have a motion and a second to approve Instructional Affairs, items number two. Item number two.
Second.
Rule call.
I just, I was taken off the agenda, I just had to come back to it. I, I see, I see Instructional Affairs, number one.
We, we, that's off the agenda.
It's off the agenda, okay, good, there's a public to that.
We voted on number two, I say, item number two.
Okay.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes. Policy, nothing at this time. Student activities and communication, a motion to approve student activity communications, item number one.
Does it move?
Second.
Rule call.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Human Resources, ask for a motion to approve Human Resources, items number one to 28.
Does it move?
Second.
Discussion? Rule call?
Yeah, sorry, I just want to, we only have one retirement this month, and that is Ms. Richard Horn's letter of retirement, security guard, she worked 14 years, so congratulations.
Thank you, Sean.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Not here.
I'm sorry. Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
On number five, transfers, 24, 25 school year, no to, and I was told to give the name, is that correct?
It's the only way to distinguish it right now.
Was that?
Yeah, because there's no other way for the court secretary to distinguish between the two.
Okay, no to Joan Natoli, Natoli, N-A-T-O-L-I, and Michael McCluskey. Yes to the rest.
Michael.
Could you say it one more time, Connie? We couldn't hear you.
Michael.
We couldn't hear.
The names, yeah.
Okay. Michael McCluskey, Joan Natoli. Yes to the rest.
Mrs. Bloom?
No, no, no.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes. Finance, Facilities, a motion and a second to approve the Finance Facility, items number one to 55.
Does it move?
Second.
Discussion? Rule call.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
No to 38 to 41, and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Baker?
No to 39. Yes to the rest.
Mrs. Bloom?
Note number 18, I feel like Denovi needs to start working. Get your mic.
Number 18, Denovi, I know it can't be changed for this year, but I think we need to start working.
Can you guys hear me?
Thank you. I said no to number 18, the Denovi Corporation. I know that we can't change it this year, but I think it's something we need to bring back to district, we need to work on that. And I abstained from 38, 39, 40, and 41, because I'm not able to vote on anything to do with our superintendent. Yes to everything else. Because I have a daughter who teaches in the district, and that's considered an ethics issue.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, because items number 38, 39, 40, and 41 are contractual. So motion carries. Special Education, items number, motion for items number one to five.
Does it move?
Second.
Mr. Serrano?
Have a second?
Yeah, I got them.
Got you. Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes. Negotiations, nothing at this time? Any new business from the board? Saying none? Moving right along. Okay, motion to open to the public on?
What about Janice? What about the resolution?
I amended it.
Okay.
It's good.
Yeah, okay. It was already passed.
Yeah.
Okay, got you.
We need a motion to open the public?
Does it move?
Motion to open to the public, second? Okay. All in favor? All in favor? Okay. Okay, Mark Lopez? You're up.
Alrighty, so the first thing I just want to do is reassert my pride in being a WTA member. My second item that I want to do is express that cutting children's programs such as elementary art, elementary music, elementary computers, elementary counseling, middle school advanced art, sixth grade world language, does in fact hurt kids. And that cutting staff and increasing class sizes does in fact hurt kids. So anyone who has an issue with WTA and cutting staff and disputes whether or not cutting staff and cutting programs does hurt kids, they need to get their information checked. Second item is Cherry Hill Superintendent, Lenape Regional Superintendent, Haddon Township Superintendent, Collingswood Oakland Superintendent, all created advocacy plans where they encouraged their community to actually actively contact legislators, actively call legislators, actively put people on buses and drove them to Trenton to speak to legislators. I did not see that on any of our websites. I did not hear about any of that. I received no communication of that. So I want to, I guess, give accolades to Cherry Hill, Haddon Township, Collingswood Oakland, and Lenape Regional for doing such an act that we were deprived of. And I really wish that for our kids, that we would have been afforded that opportunity to fight for our kids. If this truly was a budget issue, how come those superintendents had the courage to do that for their kids? I, my family lives in Township, and I'm proud of being an employee of Township, of being from Township. I care about Township kids. I truly do. Some of the board members here know me, and they know how much I care. We were not provided that opportunity that the other superintendents provided to their community, and it hurts. It really does hurt, and I feel disrespected, but I am still proud to be a Washington Township Public School employee. I am very proud of being a WTA member, and I do care about kids. And, and, and cutting kids' programs and cutting staff from kids, yeah, it does matter, and it does have a negative impact. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Delaney Bates?
Can I just clarify that the elementary programming that he discussed was not cut? So we did not cut art, we did not cut?
I'm just going to go. For the other ones, we are. No, I. No, I think, I've expanded the programming. That's, I've expanded world language to semester courses, and we've expanded, so there's been no elementary programming. Cut, maybe redelivered by a different person, but there's nothing that's been cut.
Thanks, French.
I just had a few questions because of what some of my teachers have told me. I was told that teachers who have been working under five years, they could be fired, but No, I think, I've expanded the programming, that's, I've expanded world language to semester courses, and we've expanded, so there's been no elementary programming cut, maybe redelivered by a different person, but there's nothing that's been cut.
Thanks, French.
I just had a few questions because of what some of my teachers have told me. I was told that teachers who have been working under five years, they could be fired, but if they're over five years, they could not. I just wanted to know if that was true. And then I had another question. Who is going to step in for all the volunteer roles that the staff does in their spare time, like after-school programs, fundraisers, and special activities? Thank you.
John Ratcliffe?
Hold on, hold on.
No, no, the superintendent's going to get back to her. You don't want any back, you want back and forth, or don't you? So, if they phrase it like a question, then there's back and forth.
No, I, it's not a back and forth. You answer the question. The second question was, who's going to step in for the teachers that are volunteering after-school and doing fundraisers? Am I correct?
And then the first one was, about teachers getting fired before, about tenure essentially.
If you can answer it.
Delaney, I'm gonna... Delaney, yeah. First off, it takes a lot to stand up in front of people, alright? So, here's, here's the rule for tenure, which I think was probably discussed with you, I have to question why, and you didn't do anything wrong. So, for tenure, four years and one day, if you're here four years and one day, you acquire what's called tenure, which means that you essentially have a safe position, unless, of course, there are cuts that go deep into a specific spot. So, it's, it's kind of a complicated process, Mr. Sweeney has to manage all that, along with the HR department. As far as volunteers go, we have to take that on a year-by-year basis. But if there's a specific question that I can answer, just catch me after, or send me an email, and I'll be happy to address it with you. Okay?
Maria Pol?
Uh, Marmonia? No, I think it's Forte.
Oh, Forte, I'm sorry.
Okay. Alright, I really didn't have anything prepared, I wasn't going to speak, but I felt like I have to at this point. I'm speaking now as a taxpayer. I was a former employee, I was the fifth-grade band teacher, and I unfortunately was one of the teachers that was affected in the budget cuts. I'm not speaking on behalf of my position anymore, I'm just speaking on behalf of my colleagues. This is a bad idea, and there's just no other way to put it other than that. For those of you who don't know, who may be watching at home who are here, what they have done is they are making the middle school band and orchestra teachers travel down to the elementary schools. So, they're right, there are no program cuts, just realignments. So, the middle school band and orchestra teachers will be going down to the elementary schools and teaching fourth grade, fifth, fourth and fifth grade orchestra and fifth grade band. So, what they're doing is they are having the band and orchestra basically either in the morning or the afternoon, so they can split their day to go down to the elementary schools to teach. That's, it's just not a good idea, it's, it's, it's not practical in the long term. It's so much work, I was working at five buildings this year, and it was all the same grade level, and it was hard to manage. Don't get me wrong, I would absolutely do it again in a heartbeat, I absolutely loved my job. But it was hard, it was very, very hard to manage emails from five different buildings, different, every grade level teacher, or not every level, but just fifth grade at each building. It's hard. And now they have to lesson plan for three different grade level, or four, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade band, and now, fifth grade band and orchestra, or, you know, the grade levels are band and orchestra. That's a lot of lesson planning, it's a lot of extra time. With the after-school programming, I'm not 100% certain on it, but I think I've like heard a few things, that there's only after-school busing on certain days now for, like, the middle school for activities. I know that these teachers hold after-school rehearsals for band and orchestra on the middle school level. Their contracted time is going to be, it's going to conflict with the elementary school level and the after-school rehearsals that they normally hold. My rehearsals were only allowed to be held at the end of the school day, so either 2:45 to 3:15, or 3:05 to 3:35, because that was their, the elementary school's like free period at the end of the day. That conflicts with the middle school contracted hours now. So, it's either you have to pay them stipends, or they have to find a time in their day where they have to fit that in. And as of right now, there is no time, because I've seen their schedules. They have like, I think, a 20-minute travel period, and not a big prep, right? It's just, their day is jam-packed. Speaking as, you know, the fifth-grade band teacher, and as an alumni, this is so disheartening to see, to happen to this program. I was in this program when there was 100, or not 100, maybe like 90 kids in the marching band, we were a giant group sizes, we were winning competitions in marching band, we had two different ensembles, three different ensembles at some point at the high school. This is just, it really is a shame to see what this Township and this district has done to the music and the art program. And I don't want to speak much about the art program, I don't really know what's going on in that area, I'm just speaking solely on music. It's, it's a shame, it really is a shame, and I understand that, like I said, the, fine, there were budget cuts, there were things that you can do, but at this point, it feels like it's constantly the music and the art department that is being hurt the most. And it really is so disheartening and so discouraging, and the, I'm running out of time. And the, the notion that other districts are doing this, I applied for a job in another district where they're adding a fourth and fifth grade band teacher, because they needed more teachers, they're building their program. So, it's not happening in every district, it's just happening in this one, and that's upsetting, it truly is. So, I hope that going forward, you can fix it and be, and do better for my colleagues and the students in this program, not for me, like I said. I, I truly feel bad for the people who are going to have to take this on next year, and I wish you nothing but the best, and I love you guys, and if you need any help, I still help, because I love you. But yeah, I just, it, there needs to be a better solution going forward, so I hope you figure that out.
Ali Al.
So, I noticed earlier on that we were now referring to them as staff cuts. Before, it was non-renewals. This is another issue for HR. We got around, I guess, contract negotiations by calling them not a reduction of force and not staff cuts, but non-renewals. This, doesn't this issue, like this statement, put us at risk of being sued for breach of contract with the NGAA? Also, during a reduction of force, HR typically reviews the current staff and makes reductions based on the resources needed, overall job performance, seniority, and other things. We got rid of all the aides, and everybody who was not on contract. Was there any review done based on the personnel and what was needed in the schools in order to determine who was being cut? A very important part of HR is to understand salary and benefits, and how our company's overall compensation compares to others. I am shocked that a quick look, because it's all public, shows that our administration is being paid at a higher amount than surrounding school districts. I find, I just found out that our HR director makes more than the HR director at Cherry Hill, who happens to have HR experience. Are we doing any salary compensation reviews, or overall compensation reviews in order to determine these things? As you stated earlier, Dr. Hibbs, I'm sure Mr. Sweeney is a great teacher and a great principal, but he is not an HR professional. He put our children at risk when those emails went out, he's not doing his due diligence in looking at what our district needs in regards to staff forces, and he is not even making sure that we're paying in line with what other districts offer for our employees. What are we going to do about that moving forward? And to get back of the issue of classroom sizes, based on last year's enrollment, Birch's fourth grade will have over 25 kids in their class right now. This is assuming that no more than 10% of the kids do not re-enroll. Roughly, that's eight kids. I mentioned that you have your forecasting models, but what models are you looking at that are showing us that 10% of our kids are un-enrolling in fourth grade? We have yearbooks, so we're going to be able to see next year who's still in the class and who didn't un-enroll, and why we had more than 25 kids truly enrolled in the school district when my kid has 26, 27, 28 kids per class. I'm just looking for some answers. And the HR position is one that is going to really affect our tax dollars when the lawsuits start coming in.
Angelo Terusa?
I wasn't going to speak tonight, Angelo Terusa, WTSSPA. First, I would like to say thank you for reinstating those benefits. That means the world to 16 people. I know it sounds like just 16 people, but it is the world to them, so I want to say thank you for that. As you know, I always come up here and I'm always respectful, and that's not going to change. But I do find that I, I do need to say a few things. First of all, I would ask you to please reconsider all the positions that got switched around. I know you're saying that they were RIF, you know, oriented, you had to do it according to our contract, but as you also know, we filed a grievance on that. So, I'm asking you once again to put those positions back. Some of the most important ones, and not that we're all not important, we are, the health aide positions are very important. They help those offices run smoothly and safely. They address every student in the school, and I think they are crucial, and to put people in those positions that have no experience, don't want them, didn't ask for them, they were put in there without a choice. So, I think that puts things a little bit at risk. Same thing with our clericals. Our clericals help the main offices run smoothly, they, they help a lot of, a lot of things that people don't realize, they take care of a lot of records in the guidance office, they're crucial. These are people who do not receive benefits. These are three-and-a-half-hour people, they're not six-hour people, they're not, a lot of them are not even 5.75. So, I would please ask you to do that. The one thing that I do have a little bit of concern over is that you mentioned earlier that next year, we will definitely be looking at a budget shortfall. And I guess my concern is, how are you going to address that? Because are we looking at privatization down the road? That's my main concern. So, please, I would ask you to reconsider some of the things that I just talked about, and please keep that in mind, because we don't want to have the same kind of year that we had this year, we don't want that year next year. People want to work here, they're here for a reason. They love being here, they're loyal, they're dedicated, they go above and beyond, so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Jerry Tarachi?
Jerry Tarachi, I'm the president of the WTEA. I'm going to make it very short, remarkably enough. We've heard for several meetings that this shortfall was not a one-year thing. The so-called expert that stood up earlier, he's no longer in the room, said this didn't start this year, started prior to this year. So, my one and very important question is, who is on the Budget Committee in this district? And if this has been happening for a number of years, which I even heard the superintendent make reference to that in some of the previous meetings, why weren't we warned about this three, four, five, 10 years ago? When we keep hearing that it's been going downhill, 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 and now we're at the valley, the bottom? Who is on the Budget Committee? And why wasn't the Budget Committee aware of it? And why didn't they alert the staff and the community that this was happening? Thank you.
Ron Lucchini?
Does it require a response? No.
I wasn't...
Is it a committee?
It was on the Budget Committee. Everybody on the Budget Committee?
Five years ago.
Let's address that one piece of it.
Finance, budget, whatever word you want to use?
Yep.
To respond to it, why wasn't this brought up sooner than that?
I don't know, ask Joe Baldorf, he was the superintendent.
Alright.
One sec, Ron, I think that, I don't want to be accused of not responding.
The current Finance Committee is Mr. La Liberty, Mr. Ross, Mrs. Bloom, and Mr. Tom Zach. And if you, if you listen to previous budget meetings and look at previous budget presentations, you'll see the same message over and over again about the loss in state aid, about not having additional revenue sources, about having, the only place we can go is taxes, about cutting positions, about cutting things and not having enough surplus moving forward.
May I respond?
No. No. Get another card. Get another, get another card.
She can't get another card.
Because you can only participate once for each public comment. If not, then Mr. Lopez was then denied the right when I said you can't, right? Like, then he was denied a right to speak in the first section. I'm just speaking, I'm just trying to be equitable, right? We can't. We either answer it or don't, but we can't, you can't put in another card, because Mr. Lopez was denied that right in the first public comment.
Well, we came back and worked.
I mean, some...
Oh, back, no, Ron. Jerry.
We did it right before.
Come on, Jerry, ask your question. We'll get you an answer. Alright, Mr. Lucchini?
Alright. You know the old saying about lawyers, you know, how you know they're lying, their lips are moving? This lawyer doesn't have to worry about that, though, we have Mrs. Baker on the board. Several years ago, you were here at a meeting complaining that they were actually hiring more guidance counselors, because when you were a guidance counselor, they had three, but then they cut it to two, and you were talking about the, the lack of, the number of students that had, we had lost, and the justification for all this. That was one thing. Now, you're up there talking about the homogeneous grouping for the art, and I'm all for it, I'm all for it. But then, when you were talking, you said, and maybe a social studies teacher retires, and once the social studies teacher retires, we could just put the, another art teacher in there. I would make a strong, you know, we'd have somebody from the public come up and start talking about how we're cutting the social studies program short, so to speak. And be quite honest with you, Mrs. Baker, if you look at our two presidential candidates, I think we need more social studies gifted and talented than we do art at this point in time, alright? But the one thing that really struck me is that, you know, this idea that we get a guy, Tom Baldizaro, who oversaw a billion-dollar expansion of Inspira, I think he knows a little something. And he always say it is, you can't put a square peg in a round hole, basically. And regardless of what he's saying, regardless of the fact that they didn't find the $7 million in Hibbs's drawer, we still have people coming up and insisting that we can put that square peg in the round hole. You got to make some choices. So, now, Mrs. Baker wants the art program. The head of the, the president for the, you know, I guess, the aides and the support staff, thank you, she comes up, she wants to see these people back in the nurses' office, and I agree with you, they, there are a lot of special people in the nurses' offices, alright? But she wants to see them back in. You know, so I guess we go back to the Ron Lucchini budget, which I mentioned four meetings ago. Let's put everything in, and let's see how the taxpayers like it, alright? Because I got news, and, and by the way, if we were understaffed compared to all these districts, I didn't hear anybody object to, you know, what Tom Baldizaro said, then I could see making that case, you know, to keep all these positions. But let's put them all back in, I don't know if we're allowed to do that, and let's see what the taxpayers have to say. The one thing we always make a mistake here is there's usually 40 people in a room during these sort of times, and they all have an agenda, which obviously, their agenda is to keep all these jobs, and I get that, right? But you got to remember that there's a guy at home watching, alright? And I don't think they take too kindly to putting all these positions back in, alright? I don't think they take too kindly to hearing that we have 10 kids in a ninth, in a math class at the high school. I don't think they take too kindly to talking about, oh, how we need to put these kids who are gifted and talented in an arts, you know, program. I believe in all that, Mrs. Chilla believes in all that, Mrs. Baker believes in all that, but the, the one thing where I differ from Mrs. Baker is I believe in reality, alright? This is the same woman who told me, never, don't ever vote for anyone with, that runs on a slate, and now she's in bed with them, okay? Tom Baldisaro made a comment to these two or three up here about, you know, get real and stop obstructing the superintendent just for your political reasons. He didn't use politics. And there wasn't a response back. Mr. Sorano, a few meetings ago, you voted no to a calendar change that's been going on in this district for years. And that change was, I guess it was a Wednesday graduation to a Monday graduation. And I don't understand why you voted no, but I do know that I was subpoenaed to an ethics hearing for Mrs. Cozempel, who is tied to your Democratic Party, and that was on a Wednesday. And in speaking to the lawyers, had there been a graduation, that might have been another excuse to delay it more, all right?
Time's up.
All right, so the time's up. Anyway, maybe you could answer that one, Sorano. Thank you.
Randy Ford.
Randy, before, you good, Randy? Just real quick, I want to address Mr. Taraschi's question. So what I would encourage everyone to do, and Mr. Baldisaro actually did this, which was painstaking. He went back and watched all the budget hearings going back to 1920. So if you go back to 1920.
1920?
Dude, he was good for 100 and 150.
1920? 19? Did I say 1920? Yeah. I didn't really mean 1920. I meant like 19-20. All right? How about that? All right, it's been a long night. How about that? Going, how about 2019, 2020? Superintendent Bolendorf, he said basically this, and in quotes, "We recognize the fact that staffing reductions are probably going to be one of the greatest things we'll be faced with in the coming years with the reduction in state aid." Then if you look at the 2021 budget, there were similar comments, you know, made by, by Janine. She projected the total future loss of state aid is expected to be over $3.4 million. She also referenced that there's no other way to sustain it because of all of the reductions in state aid. So you can go back through and see all those budget presentations, and you can, I'm not telling you to watch, but it's all right there, and it's all about the reductions in state aid. It's, it's all there. Okay?
Am I allowed to respond to that?
Don't have another card. Go home, it's late. Go home, Miss Jerry. Jimmy Alpino, Arpino?
All right, I just want to circle back to the thing that was raised when I sat down before. I also, you know, Ms. Klein makes a good point. Why don't you board members talk to us? Like, I feel like every November, I see your signs everywhere. You mail me stuff, us stuff. You want to tell us all the great things you do, but now we have a crisis, and there's questions, and I don't know, you know, I don't know what the order is, if you're allowed to, but I feel like we hear you campaigning, but this is where you earn your salt. And I, this is the time that you probably should talk. So I want to reiterate again my open request. Any reports indicating structural damage and/or safety concerns with the bleachers? I'm left with the, the mindset that this is the only report from Remington and Burnick. Am I right? Like, there has to, you guys, board members, nothing against Dr. Hibbs, but you guys top of the command chart. You vote on the budgets. You vote on the spending. There had to be some way that you came to the conclusion to make an educated decision to vote for this project. Like, who told you that the bleachers were damaged or were bad and need to be replaced? There has to be something there. If there's not, that's just not good government. Like, you're spending $900 and almost $950,000, and you're telling me this is the only piece of paper that doesn't say there's any damage? Like, that's incredulous to me, that we're there. Like, there has to be something. I was hoping tonight that I would come and I'd hear Dr. Hibbs say, you know what, Mr. Harpino, bleachers really aren't that bad. Because now I go back to my first point. If the bleachers are that bad, then hell, did we, or you as a board, we as taxpayers, assume the liability of putting people on them? Your attorney, I'm sure, would agree here. I'm not an attorney. I know I was a fireman, a fire chief, and if I had preconceived knowledge before I went to a house that was on fire, that it was failing and a safety hazard, I wouldn't send firemen in there. So how do we come to a decision, these are that bad? This, the public statement was made that they're failing and they're a safety hazard, yet they weren't shut down, because I went there after that meeting to see if they were cordoned off. There's pictures of there were 1,000 people in there. Like, I, I just can't believe that we're making these decisions with taxpayer dollars. Mr. Hibbs might be right. Dr. Hibbs might be right. They may be bad, but we as taxpayers should be able to see a document that says that. Now we're moving the, it's, it's like we're moving the goalpost here. It was safety, it was this, that. Now we're putting in ADA-compliant ramps. Well, good. I don't think anybody had an issue with that, but I know ADA-compliant ramps aren't going to cost me $945,000. Is there itemized deductions or quotes for separate parts? Like, I feel like I'm just going to have to keep emailing Janine, and I really don't want to do that to her. She's busy enough. But again, you guys are the elected officials. Dr. Hibbs is right. He just came last March. You guys, a majority of, mostly you're here last year, except for Ms. Bloom. Ms. Choe said last meeting, a $7 million shortfall doesn't happen overnight. You're right, and local government doesn't happen year to year, and without a corresponding catastrophe. This has been going on. You guys were funding your budgets with COVID money. If anybody worked with COVID money, there was end dates on it all along. You knew when it was going to end. And then it comes out, and this is why I have a problem. We have a purchase order for $945,000 in December. You guys knew there was a problem. And the last thing is, there's a trust issue. I have a trust issue with you guys. Because again, I'll bring up, you put up on a budget presentation that you're spending $800,000 on this project, but your purchase order says something different. That's a problem. You have to be transparent. Why wouldn't you just tell us the truth? Thank you for your time, Doc.
We were answering the, the student when my name got called, so. I, fun fact, I learned public speaking from Pat Klein back when I was in college, so.
You did. I was your professor.
See? I'm just a little bit thinner now. I'm just, I'm just a little bit thinner now. But I'm still not great with the, the eye contact stuff, so I, thankfully, we have a number of board members who never actually look at the person speaking. But the last time I was here, I talked, I called this my favorite bi-monthly primetime drama. It still is. This is, this is up there in the ratings tonight, because the Phillies lost. But I'm hearing that the art, i- it is okay to put two different levels of arts in the same classroom. I think that that, I think it's a great idea. I think that you should make the head football coach also teach freshmen of football at the same time, right? I think that's a good idea. That, that makes sense to me. Or if you want to talk about the middle school teachers having to now go down to elementary schools, or pulling your high school band director out of the building to go down to a middle school, it's kind of like a soccer coach being pulled out to go teach rec right in the middle of a practice. That doesn't make sense. Just because they can do it doesn't mean that they should. They, yeah, we want to keep teachers in their passion level. That's not the way to do it. I am a teacher that has traveled. I do that. It doesn't work. I'm telling, from firsthand experience, it doesn't work. Because all I've heard tonight is, oh, this isn't going to affect students. You had a student tell you that it is going to affect students, and that's still going right over our head. So I, I don't know, maybe somebody else needs to come up and say it. But it does affect students. Them not having that full, I, I'm an alumni of this district, so them not having that full level of, you know, classroom time to work in their art, great, it's a short-term solution, but down the road, just like, we just graduated all the COVID kids who started behind a screen, and we had to work for four, three, four years, all of us, to get them to try in the classroom again, and get them back to that level. You're now about to do the same thing again. Great, it's a short-term solution now, but in three years when they're in high school, oh, they don't know what they're doing, they don't know how to play their thing. Oh, whose fault is that now? I'm sure you'll blame the teachers, because that's how this works. So it doesn't work at all. That's topic number one. Topic number two that I had was on board etiquette. We just talked about having board members speak to the public and all that. But if I'm right with the open, with the response and open public stuff, all direct comment is supposed to go through the presiding officer, and then it gets distributed to other people. That, that's just not happening. We're just kind of calling things out, and random people are speaking, and I'm frankly just tired of hearing some of the voices. Because going back to the arts, I have eyes, and so do all of us, and the supervisors were there last week. It was clear as day that there were supervisors called out last week. They don't make the decisions. They don't, they didn't decide how many people to cut. They didn't decide who was going to get fired. They didn't decide what, that comes from the top. Supervisors are responsible for delegating and designing their programs, as I do, but I don't get to make the hiring and firing decisions for my own staff. That goes through my boss, and that comes from the top. So I really don't want to hear, you know, they shouldn't have to come be here and me a scapegoat. Our supervisors in this district are good at what they do. They're very good at their job. They shouldn't have to come in front of the public and try to defend actions that should go through the top. It's your job to answer those questions, not anybody else. You're supposed to be answering the questions of, why is this happening to this program? What's the justification behind this? It's not a personnel issue, it's a program issue. This was clearly just, I mean, again, this was decided way back when, that we were going to do this because of cuts, blah, 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 blah. How did we get to that point? That's what I'm kind of missing here. How did we get there? How did we decide this is the path that we should go down? These are the positions that we should eliminate. Again, those don't go through supervisors. They have to come from the top. That's just kind of my thing with that. So I'm looking for an answer from the top and not from anybody else. That goes, I want this question to go through the presiding officer and nobody else. And if we're not going to answer that question tonight, then we really don't need to have a back and forth, because we've shown tonight that we can't do that. Thanks.
Patty Curlin? Patty Curlin?
Pass. Rip it up.
Rip it up? Okay. Rob Scardino?
Rob Scardino, WTEA Executive Vice President. I'd like to yield my time to Jerry Taraschi.
permitted? My time is, that's fine. I'll, I'll make it within the time limit, believe me.
I'm letting him do it, Carol.
As long as everybody else can do it. I have no, I have nothing on that.
Mr. Ross, in addition to my admiration for you.
That's not what you said last time.
No, that was two meetings ago. I would like to address something that Dr. Hibbs just made reference to. And although you missed the date, that's fine. You made reference to the fact that if I went back and looked at all the previous budget information from 2000 this and 2000 that, I would find that Mr. Bolendorf made reference to the shortfalls, potential shortfalls? Yes? If that be the case, and the red flag went up, then why did we not plan for all that through all those years? So that we didn't hit the bottom that we've now hit? That's my question.
I can't answer that one, Jerry. I can't answer that one. That's before Eric.
Okay. See where are we? I'm going to the public. A motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Take it?
Take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I need a motion to go back into executive session.
No action will be taken.
No action will be taken.
After, after we return.
After we come out next.
You got a motion, we got a second.
Got a second? Let me roll call on that, wait, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Raf, I have a question. Are they, are these big screen TV, are they new? They look big, they look bigger to me. I don't know if they look bigger because the numbers are on there, but are the, are these new? Does anybody know if these are new?
They were here.
Dr. Hibbs, do you know, are these new?
Tell them they were here.
They, they are new this year, yes.
They're new?
Yeah. And let's, let's, but let's, if you're, you're going to, you're going to call me out as a board member, I'm going to point out, I think that's borderline ethical violation, A. B. Secondly, just so everybody knows, the, the comments from even Mrs. Baker is that she could not read things in presentations. So they couldn't see the little 35-inch screens that were up there. So we did all this in-house. We did. We did, for sure. And in the boardroom that we use for everything, everything that we do, everything that we do.
Okay, we're going into executive session now.
Didn't you just vote for one to executive?
We did.